Good afternoon, everyone. Today is May the 11th of 2023. This is our Committee of the Whole meeting. To start the meeting off, I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, addition, sorry, before I move on, please note in the meeting minutes that Councilor Durkey is absent with regrets. Item number three, additions or deletions. I have two. Item 6.2, The Tri-County Pregnancy Care by Carol Spinney, and item 8.2, The Coastal Protection Act Delay by Councilor Durkey. I'm going to ask that we defer those to another committee of the whole meeting to be announced. Is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Deputy Warden?
I'd like to add Park Drive to the agenda, just the paved section that's J-class to discuss that.
Okay, we'll add that under item 9.5. Park Drive. All right, entertain any other additions or deletions? If not, entertain a motion to the amendments to the agenda. Moved by Councilor Sheri Hurlibur. Do I have a second or a second by Councilor Lauren Cushing? Any discussion here? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Presentations, item 6.1, The Mersey-Tobiak Institute. I don't think Marie is here yet. We'll just move on the agenda. When she shows up, we'll go back to that item. Item number seven, 7.1, Correspondence for Action, the Amman's Municipal Sponsorship for the Fall Convention. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your package, council is a request to support the Association of Municipal Administrators' annual fall conference being hosted by this region of municipal administrators this fall. Every year when the convention comes together, the municipalities who are hosting it are collectively challenged to help support the conference. This year, the goal was $12,000, and it's being, the requests are being shared across the 11 municipalities in the tri-county area in relation to uniform assessment of population. So the ask from the association to the District of Yarmouth is $1,820.14.
Deputy Warden?
I'll move that Committee of the Whole forward to regular council. A motion to approve Amman's 2023 Fall Convention financial contribution in the amount of
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or a second by Councilor Lauren Cushing? Any discussion on that? I do have one question. Would that be coming from this year's budget or last current fiscal year? Madam CEO?
No, this fiscal.
So this would be on our budget?
It will appear when you approve your budget in June, this item will be included in those statement of estimates.
Okay. That's fine, just wondering where it was going to show up. All right, any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, Mary, are you here?
Yes, I am. Sorry.
Marie, sorry. Actually, we'll move back to your item, item 6.1, The Mersey-Tobiak Research Institute. If you wouldn't mind, just come up, and there's a red button on the microphone, just hit that, and I'll turn the floor over to you. Turn on your microphone. You don't have to speak directly into it.
Just want to let you know that I'm presenting.
Yep.
Is that this little guy?
Yep, that's that little guy right there. So when you're ready, you can take a seat. When you're comfortable, you can, you can start. Apologies, I did not pronounce your last name because I didn't want to butcher it.
That's okay. I'll, I'll say it for you all, and thank you all for giving us the opportunity to talk about our organization and our work today, and we'll be discussing municipal species-at-risk stewardship. I'm Marie Rasiopa, and I'm a Communications and Outreach Coordinator with MTRI. This is my colleague Colin.
Colin Gray, also from MTRI.
So the scope of today's presentation includes a brief introduction to MTRI and the Gesbowick Conservation Collaborative, or the KCC. I will be presenting some of the broad results from our, in our municipal environmental stewardship survey, and I will also bring up some of the results that are specific to this municipality. And then I'll be talking a bit about the toolkit we're working on, and then we'll have our 10-minute Q and A period. And if, since I started a bit late, we want to shorten that a bit, and that's totally fine. So we'll start with MTRI, and Colin, if you have a bit of background on the organization?
Sure. I'm just here for moral support, more than anything else, for Marie, and I've been with MTRI for a number of years.
Just move that, no, just move that between you so we can hear you. You don't have to speak directly into it.
So just briefly, I'll give you a little background about the organization, and you'll see on the slide, or some of you will see on the slide, that our mission is to promote sustainable use of natural resources and biodiversity conservation. And we are in the southwest Nova Scotia Biosphere Reserve, and we also call that Kesbowick, which is the indigenous name for the southwest part of the province of Nova Scotia. And we are also doing research beyond the boundaries of Gesbowick and into other parts of Nova Scotia and the Maritimes. And our vision, of course, is really to come to a day where we no longer have species at risk, we have good, healthy forests, healthy aquatic ecosystems, and aquatic connectivity. So a little bit about the history, it was 2004 that our organization began, and we started out with an employee, one employee, our executive director, who is now retired or moved on, and a small board of directors. And in 2006, we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase the Bowater-Mersey Woodlands Operations Station in North Queen's in Kemp, and then in 2010, we expanded the, the building itself, and we developed a community room and a bunkhouse in the back, and so accommodations for students. And we've gone from, from that 2004 to one employee and a small board to now a budget of over $1 million per year, and we employ 17 people in total. We have 12 full-time staff at the moment, and we have five students that are coming in for the summer. And so it's been, it's like the little engine that could when we consider what we started out with in 2004 and where we are today. So most of our funding comes from three levels of government, the municipal government, provincial government, and the federal government. We have some funding through industry and, of course, from other large corporations, banks would be included in that. So we've been a thriving little nonprofit since 2004. We have about 600 members and about 30 partners, and I suppose we could consider yourselves as partners as well, each municipality in the province. And our Board of Directors is, consists mostly of a variety of the general public, landowners, educators from the different universities within the province, and representation from the three levels of government. And that pretty well sums it up. That's very short and sweet, but that's basically what, what we do. And I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mention some of the research, and I should mention this, that it goes beyond species at risk. There's many projects that we've worked on, including forest, the forest industry, forest projects. I think she, Marie has some listed there that you can see. No, I'm sorry, it's not. So, yeah, that's it. Great, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So MTRI is also a member of the Gesbowick Conservation Collaborative, which is a group of 18 different partners, including Mi'kmaq organizations, NGOs, academic institutions, and then also the provincial and federal environment departments are a part of the KCC. It was established in October 2017, and they're working together to conserve species at risk and biodiversity in the Gesbowick Southwest Nova Scotia Priority Place. So we distributed a survey to municipalities to get at the question that's up there, how can we support municipalities in species-at-risk stewardship? And to get at this, we asked which environmental concerns are greatest priorities, what are the barriers that municipals, municipalities are facing to stewardship, and we wanted to identify opportunities for linking municipalities with different environmental groups that can help with their initiatives and provide some support and expertise. So we closed the survey in March of 2023, and we had participation from 56 different respondents, and it represented 22 of the 24 municipalities in Gesbowick that we were So here are the key results that we had from the survey, and keep in mind that there was a varying level of response from the different municipalities, and we also had a majority of council members, it was a little over 50% of our respondents were members of a council. So what we found was that municipalities generally lack some awareness of the Priority Place initiative. We had 23% of our survey respondents were familiar with this initiative, and right now there are 11 priority places established across Canada, which includes the Gesbowick Southwest Nova Scotia Priority Place, and it is also, this one is also a UNESCO biodiversity hotspot. Our respondents were also less familiar or less confident on their knowledge of ecosystem services compared to some of the other topics that we asked about were ecosystem, species-at-risk, and invasive species. So we found that 54% of respondents were not familiar with the term ecosystem services, and that they didn't find the loss of vital ecosystem services to be a high concern within their municipality. And despite this, 59% of our respondents reported species-at-risk as being very important for healthy ecosystems. So we did find that there is a link, and that municipalities generally know that there's a link between species-at-risk and ecosystem health, but the term ecosystem services is not being used by municipalities, and there might be some misunderstandings with it. Climate change was undoubtedly the primary environmental concern for both municipalities and municipal residents, and climate change mitigation and adaptation is becoming increasingly important for municipalities to uphold these ecosystem services that support healthy communities and indirectly benefit species-at-risk. We detected that there was a more positive response to the potential for any municipality to implement policy shifts than there was for implementing new planning strategies. And finally, political will, capacity limitations, and lack of funding were all reported as the largest barriers to environmental stewardship. So for the municipality of the District of Yarmouth specifically, they noted some unique features of the area, which included coastlines, lakes, and habitat for the rare Atlantic coastal plain flora species, or ACPF. Water quality was a key concern for both the municipality and municipal residents, and this municipality named the greatest number of environmental concerns that are, that the municipality is facing, and also the most challenges to species-at-risk stewardship. And these challenges included a lack of multi-level government support, a lack of enforcement, and also a lack of clarity on the municipal versus provincial versus federal responsibilities when it comes to environmental stewardship. Some other reported challenges were funding and capacity issues. And the Tuscat River Environmental Protection Association was the most notable organization that this municipality already has a working relationship with and is using to get support on environmental issues and with planning issues. Planning was a tool that this municipality is already using for environmental stewardship. So the results from this survey are being used to inform and help our development of a municipal species-at-risk stewardship toolkit, and the website that's listed above on the slide is where the toolkit will be hosted. So the point of these discussions is that we want municipalities to be thinking about the needs and the challenges that are relevant to their municipality, and that, so that we are able to create a toolkit that's going to fill information gaps and help with outreach on species-at-risk and connect municipalities to the various local organizations that are providing support. So I'm going to briefly go over the components of the toolkit. We've been working on a couple of different spatial tools, and two of them are, there will be two interactive maps, one of which will show the various levels of bylaw protection that each municipality has that's relevant to species-at-risk. So for example, this municipality's bylaws mention species-at-risk in both the municipal climate change action plan and in the municipal planning strategy, which is not something that all municipalities are doing. And then also in this municipality, the land use bylaw has some specific limitations on development on coastal wetlands. So we're really looking for these different examples of bylaws that we can help, that we can expose to different municipalities so they have ideas of ways they can move forward. And then we're also planning to create a map, including species-at-risk information, municipal success stories, and special places, as mentioned by the survey respondents. We are developing an interactive decision tree to help municipalities and other users find recommended strategies and actions that they can take to benefit species-at-risk. And then we're consolidating different conservation and municipal tools, finding case studies, and examples of bylaws and policies locally and across Canada that can help us inform municipalities on, on different actions they can take that can benefit species-at-risk. And we will also have some, like, examples of outreach materials for species-at-risk. And then we'll have some funding and organizational interactive tables so that municipalities can find different funding opportunities and organizations that can help with their specific needs, and we'll have a section for community action reports and guides, and these are for more indirectly related environmental stewardship topics, things like native plant lists and dark sky preserve best practices, or water quality resources, would all be in the community action section. So in closing, please contemplate this question, how can your municipality be supported in environmental stewardship? And feel free to reach out to me via email with any questions, suggestions for the toolkit, or any opportunities to work together on a stewardship initiative. And thank you all for listening, and we'll now open for questions.
Any questions? Counselor Nick Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And ironically, your question was my question for you, is, is really how can we best take the information that you provided and incorporate it into our daily work? So I don't know what I don't know. So, you know, presentations like this help with the toolkit will be also very helpful, but I need to know when to use the toolkit without really knowing when to use the toolkit. So what, yeah, any suggestions on how I can take what you're telling me and, and bring that to our daily decision-making?
Yeah, and some of the ways that we envision the toolkit being used is if a resident of your municipality comes to you and wants some specific information, then you'd be able to go onto the toolkit and maybe find some answers about, if they have like a species-at-risk on their property, then you can help them find where they can look for some recovery actions that they could do, or also outreach materials that you could share with them, that type of thing. Or if you're looking for funding opportunities, and you could go on the interactive table and find one, and then maybe even like go to a NGO and ask for their support on creating an application for a funding opportunity. So very, I feel like there's quite a few different ways to get involved with the toolkit because of the different components we plan on having in it, and hopefully it would help with when municipalities are interacting with the public.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you for the presentation. Been on council for a bit, and, and we've had some water quality concerns, that they're ongoing, but one of the things that amazed me that I learned as a counselor and didn't know previously is just how fragile our, our water systems are in terms of, they're, we're well aware, they're, they're very nutrient, the lands in the area are relatively nutrient-poor and, and therefore don't do well with high nutrient loads being, being applied to, you know, adjacent lands or lands adjacent to lakes, that type of thing, and you get the algal blooms, obviously. Just, just with an eye to that fact, is that going to be discussed in your, in, in the document that you, you have produced? Because that, that really is the piece, like, we're trying to do some education around not having people, you know, clear-cut to the, to the lake edge, you know, have a riparian buffer, just, just so the nutrient load doesn't, doesn't get into our lakes as much or as quickly, or, because that, that can be, that can spell disaster, obviously, for the, for the health of the lake. So maybe just to comment on that.
Yeah. Species-at-risk will definitely be like the main focus of the toolkit, but we do want to include water quality resources because that's something that this municipality and several other municipalities are dealing with, and even to connect municipalities with each other, like Kings, for example, has had a long-running volunteer program with citizen scientists going out and, and assessing water quality, so maybe different municipalities could help each other with creating these different initiatives to help with water quality issues.
You also have the direct advantage of TRIPA, that has been very active for a long, long time in this, in this part of the country.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Do you, do you folks work with Acadia University at the urban center of the Acadia Forest?
Acadia University is one of the KCC partners, so they're part of the collaborative.
Yeah, they have quite a, quite a display there of natural habitat, right? Yeah. So it's good that you work with them, yeah. Interesting, thank you.
Counselor Sheri Hurlibur?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in to present. You mentioned that in our current MPS and LUB, that we have some language there, we are going through a review of that. So I think, you know, maybe I'm looking across the, across the room at Deputy Warden Cunningham, he is the chair of our Planning Advisory Committee, so maybe we can, you know, work something just to ensure that what we have stays, or, you know, are there ways to make it better? I guess if you're commending us on something we have in there, and it's of value, then we want to make sure that in our new, you know, when we get to the final stages of those two documents, that they still remain there and maybe are a little bit more than, you know, than we can have.
Yeah, strengthening them would be great, but yeah.
Yeah. So do I need to make a mo, I know we don't, we don't make motions during presentations, but just to note that, you know, when we're going through the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, that we make sure that, that stuff stays.
We typically don't make motions.
No, I know. Yep.
Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilor Hurlibur, for bringing it up. So we do have a website called planmodi.ca with the two new documents on it, so I, I was kind of thinking maybe you guys would want to review that to make sure that we were still following, you know, best practices, and let us know if, if you had a recommendation or not. Again, I don't know what I don't know, and I don't know what to keep and not get rid of, so.
Yeah.
Any recommendations that you bring, and you can, you can reach out directly to the consultation team and make recommendations, we're still in that public consultation period, so now's the time to, to kind of get your word in on what Modi should and shouldn't be doing.
Okay, perfect, that's, that sums it up. So thank you so much.
I do have one question, since I see no other microphones going. You, you mentioned that you're going to be developing, or you have developed a toolkit?
The toolkit is still, some of the pieces are there, some of them are still in development.
Because I do know that in Municipal Yarmouth, that we do when developers are doing work near lake shores or waterways, watercourses, that we do have a brochure that, that is handed out by our development department and best practices. So maybe that's something that you may have already or may be using, and I do believe it was in conjunction with TRIPA, which you had mentioned, that we developed that, and that is handed out because we don't want to see people clear-cut every, all the trees and stuff right to the lake shore. We'd much rather see them keep as much of it as possible, a lot, but still allowing access to the lake from their property, so that's some other information that we do give out.
Yeah, resources like that are things that we would really want to feature on the toolkit as well, so other municipalities can look at it and get ideas of what they can do in their municipality to, to kind of discourage development on these sensitive areas.
And actually, I don't know if we have an online version, but I do know that there's printed hand copies that we hand out, so I can certainly refer those to you.
Yeah.
It may be something you already have, or even you just walk downstairs and ask Kim down there in the, in the office for that, so.
Yeah, I'll take a look around for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, since I see no more questions, thank you very much for your time and your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. You have a good drive.
Thank you.
All right, moving back to item 7.1, 7.1.2, Task Force for the Yarmouth International Airport. You all have that in your package. As we all know, the airport's a very critical piece of infrastructure in the Municipal District of Yarmouth and for all of southwest Nova, because it's not only used for medevac flights, it's used by search and rescue, ground search, the military when they're doing, doing searches in the area for fueling forest fires. Unfortunately, we were going through that again this year. And what's in your package is the board is looking for your support in forming a task force with a mandate of seeking stable financial support from both the federal and provincial governments. The board is going to be tasked with identify the task force members, create the mandated oversight, and delivery-specific tasks designed to accomplish what we're setting out to do. We don't know what the budget implications are at this time, but it's just looking for support from the Municipal District of Yarmouth in, in creating this task force. Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to you and the Yarmouth International Airport Committee for the work that you're doing. I see this very similar to what the Industrial Commission is doing and pulling together experts in the area to kind of try to find answers to long-term problems, so I'm in full support of the creation of the task force. I'm assuming that if there is budget implications, that would come back before we'd.
Yes, it would.
That work would be done, so I'll make the motion that we recommend a regular council that Modi support the Yarmouth International Airport Committee in the creation of the task force for the purposes provided.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or a second by Counselor Allen? Any discussion on that motion on the floor? As I said, we're just looking for ways to, as you all know, the, the airport board has been tasked with rightsizing this, the, the airport, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of provincial and federal funding, so we're just looking for ways to tap into the monies that are out there that we do know that the province and the feds do have from time to time, whether it's for airport repair, infrastructure, lighting upgrades, radios, who knows? But we're looking, we're looking to improve that airport, make sure it stays here for the long term. Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 7.2, for information, we have a response from the Honorable Michelle Thompson. Item 8, All Business, a briefing note regarding hosting a meal. That's in your package? Counselor Sheri Hurlibur?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for deferring this to a meeting that I could attend, the last one I wasn't able to, so thank you for that. We had, I had made the motion, and we brought it forward to staff to come up with some kind of framework for how we could host meals in our community, and, you know, we've been going through the budget process and our grants, and we know that food security is a huge, you know, issue within our community and surrounding community. And I will make the motion that we recommend a regular council, a budget amount of $1,500 for 2022, 2024, to, to hold until we can figure out how best to support the needs of our community.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or a second by Counselor Daniel Allen? Any discussion on that? Counselor Hurlibur, you still have the floor, and the CEO.
Thank, do you want to go first? Okay, okay. As I, you know, as I said, we know that there's, you know, food security issues, and recently CBC posted, three days ago, said that one in four Nova Scotshes are, Nova Scotshens are food insecure, and so I think, you know, we as a council need to figure out how we can support that in the best possible way, and maybe an individual meal isn't the best way at this point, but I know we have had some discussions, and I think we just need to do, you know, some more, more work on how we can best do that before we make a final decision. Thank you.
Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, to Counselor Hurlberg's point, so this work was pulled together in February and early March and originally filed with council in early April. In that intervening time, we noted that as the community grants came in, a lot of the community groups are endeavoring to be part of the food security conversation in, you know, in the District of Yarmouth and in larger areas. And so, you know, I think that we need to just take a step back. There is a recommendation in the briefing note, but I don't think it quite hits the bullseye yet. So if council's agreeable and we just provide some resources, take another look at how the district can lean in with the community and support food security. I think that we will come back to you and maybe take another look at where you can plug in.
Yeah, absolutely. It's more than just supplying a meal. The food security piece in regards to, there was one grant request coming through for training for people how to support themselves. So some people, believe it or not, don't know how to play in a garden or take care of a garden, so. Yeah, it's a much larger problem, and as the CAO noted, it's something that seems to be coming through more and more over the years that I've been sitting here. So there's a motion on the floor, any more discussion on it? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 8.2 is deferred. Item 8.3, Lake Milo Submission to the Public Works in Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Municipal District of Yarmouth has an approved master plan to develop active transportation along what we call the Milo Stretch. And a significant portion of that master plan requires a partnership and collaboration with the province of Nova Scotia as it impacts Highway One, which is in their jurisdiction. So I'm seeking direction from council to put together a package and submit to the area manager to nominate that project for their capital planning process.
Deputy Warden.
So I'll move the Municipal District of Yarmouth forward to, or the Committee of the Hole forward to regular council. A motion directing our CAO to prepare submission for the area manager of Public Works, trying to get the new name, to put, to have placed on the list of capital improvements over the next number of years, the Milo Stretch.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. And, yeah, absolutely, I know why you're struggling with that, because first it was DOT, then it's TIR, and now it's Public Works in Transportation. So there's been three names since we've been sitting here on the council, Deputy Warden, that different names at the same department's been called. So I can understand your struggles with acronyms and things like that. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, New Business, 9.1, Summer Meeting Dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So typically in July and August, council likes to set aside time to plug into community events. And so in the past, you've historically had one official meeting where you've done Committee of the Hole and council together. And so I'm just bringing that for you now for planning purposes, to receive direction on your wishes for July and August this year. And I would recommend that we actually just have a council meeting and we entertain presentations. I think it's administratively, it's just a little cleaner, so that if council makes decisions, you're not recommending something at Committee of the Hole and 10 minutes later approving it in council. You can just convene a council meeting and conduct your business inside that framework.
Typically, I think last year, and someone please correct me if I'm wrong, that we met in the middle of each month, July and August, so it would be the second Wednesday?
Hmm.
Oh, sorry, the third Wednesday?
Which would be the 19th of July and the 16th of August.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and only because vacation requests for anyone that has a job have already gone in. If these meetings are going to change, then could we have them later in the day, if not the evening, as we would normally have a regular council meeting?
Whatever council's pleasure would be.
Well, that's what I'm throwing out there for discussion.
So I guess number one, dates is what we're looking for, and times of those meetings.
Deputy Warden.
Right, so I'll move the Municipal District of Yarmouth, or that we forward council a change to the regularly, regular meeting schedule, and that the meetings be council meetings, and that they be held on the 19th of July and 16th of August, and that they start at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, item 9.2, Request for Decision Regarding the Municipal District of Yarmouth's Website. We have with us Darlene LeBlanc and Mr. Mike Sodet, our IT guy. All right, I'm not sure how we're going to do this part. This is not really a presentation, it's more or less a request for decision regarding our website, and if I do remember correctly, is in regards to our address and our emails.
Sort of. There's two or—
Sort of, yeah, okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn the floor either over to Darlene and Mike, and you may start if you wish.
Okay, thank you. I brought Mike for some backup support in case you guys have techie questions that I can't answer. So we're talking about the website right now, the first one. There have been ongoing discussions at council and among staff and at the Accessibility Advisory Committee about the accessibility and user-friendliness of our website. It was identified in the accessibility plan that we needed to have a website that met accessibility guidelines, and our current one does not. So one option would be to update our current website, which would mean hiring a developer. The costs associated with that, we're estimating would be anywhere between $5,000 and $15,000 depending on how much detail was required. Another option would be to go with the Municipal Website Venture, which is a program that's run through the Association of Municipal Administrators. And they offer a service package that includes initial design and development, content transfer, training, consultation, website monitoring, and a content management system. The program has a dedicated staff person who's there to provide support when needed, and it would also ensure that we comply with accessibility guidelines. Presently, the website's being hosted onsite, which poses significant security concerns. There's a lot of critical information on the website. The Municipal Website Venture would host it themselves, which would alleviate some of those concerns. The cost associated with the Municipal Website Venture is $9,000 over three years, so $3,000 a year, it's a three-year contract, and $500 to make the website more customizable. You'll note on the document that it's also linked to a number of items in your strategic plan. So the options we're putting forward, and on Appendix A goes into a little more detail about the comparison between the two, but the options we're putting forward are to continue with our current website as is, to update the current website on our own, to join the AMA Website Venture, or to send back to staff for more research. And given the security concerns, as well as the support available to us through the Website Venture, staff recommend option three.
Great, just a quick question before I make the motion. You're recommending the AMA Municipal Website Venture, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll move the Committee of the Hole forward to regular council. A motion that approves the AMA Municipal Website Venture move forward in the amount of $9,000, $3,000 per year for three years. Oh, plus $500 to make the website more customizable.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Allen. Discussion? Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think the only reason that we would be doing this at this point is if it met accessibility standards. And in the request for decision, it says the website should meet accessibility standards. Do we know if it's going to or not?
Yes, it will. It will meet accessibility guidelines.
Okay, if it doesn't, in full support, it seems like the best and the cheapest route to get what we need going forward. Mike, what do you think?
We do, definitely.
Thanks.
All my years, it's the first I ever heard Mike speaking into the microphone during a council meeting.
First time.
First time that I can remember. Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just one question, I would be in support of this motion as well, but do you know what other municipalities use the AMA? Just so I can, I'd just like to take a look and see, like, how ours, because we know ours is not great, but, you know, looking at some of the others just to see how accessible they are and like kind of what things they have in there?
I don't have a list with me, but we know that, we can get that for you, but we know that Argyle, both Argyle and the Town go through the Municipal Website Venture.
Okay, sure.
So those are two examples, but we can get you a list of other units.
That's good, thank you.
I will, I do have one question in regards to this. It also has in here an ongoing cost of the programmer for anything unique. For example, our meeting, agenda minutes, and platform. Is that really unique, or could it change? Because when we talk about accessibility, this room here could be changing and the technology here could be changing. Would that affect it, or?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Well, the thing is, right now, we have a programmer on staff or whatever, I guess.
On contract.
Yeah, on contract. And everything was custom-built as far as the agenda and some of the little things on the website. So in the new website, that would be something, if we still wanted to carry that forward, we'd have to hire a programmer to do so.
Okay.
But doesn't mean we couldn't do it in a different way, but to continue doing it the way we're doing it now.
Yeah. All right, thank you, that answered my question. Counselor Nick Hilton.
Yeah, further to John's question, so this new website, or the new, working with AMA would provide a new platform for agendas, and they would have their own that we could then take on, like, we wouldn't have—
We'd just have to do it a different way. Like, as far as, right now, we have a custom thing just for agendas.
Yeah, we've kind of learned—
Most websites, you wouldn't have that.
Yeah, we've kind of learned in the past that maybe having one, a customized version of our own in the long run may come back to bite us, because then only one person knows what they're doing. So—
But there's more than one way to do something, so it'd just be a matter of looking at it differently and finding another way to do it, something that we could do ourselves.
Yeah, I'm not attached, I'm not attached to it, so do whatever you think is best, Mike, and we trust you.
Yeah, absolutely not attached to it, and unfortunately, the way technology is, every three months it changes. Counselor Lauren Cushing. Thank you, Mr. Warden. My only question is, as long as, is it going to be easy to access our website? That's the key, is a lot of people have trouble trying to get onto it and find things out, so. That's my main concern, is it going to be easy for people to use?
That's the goal with doing this, yeah. Whether we do it on our own or through the Municipal Website Venture, that's our goal, is to make it user-friendly.
Is it easy to get on Argyle and the Towns if they're using this?
I guess it depends on who you ask, but yes, I believe it is. It's quite user-friendly, both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. And one more thing for me. I find the biggest thing with our website is, say, for example, you say to someone, it's in our policy, just look up, say, for example, our policy on council remuneration, whatever it may be. I find that there's no search engine, so someone could type in there quickly and find it, because sometimes it's really cumbersome, the way that our website is. And I don't agree that other websites are any easier, because I find if you're looking for that or doing a little bit of research on a topic you're looking up for, I don't find theirs is any better either. I find a search window or a thing there, like searching a keyword. So I'm wondering if that would be included in something like this.
Yeah, certainly could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I have no more. I see no other microphones, they're flashing. Any more questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.3, Request for Decision, Domain Name.
So again, here, there's been ongoing discussion about the length of our current domain name, that it would be preferable to have something simpler and easier to remember. So the obvious choices that we researched of modi.ca and modi.com were taken, so those are not available to us. And if you go a little bit further down, the recommendations that we're putting forward, some of them are manyarmit.ca, manyarmit.com, and manyar.ca. Council could also decide to keep the domain name the same or to send it back to staff for more research, for more names. And the recommendation we're putting forward on that issue is using manyarmit.ca. The second part to that is about the implementation that we would have to go through. So there's two options there. One would be adding to our existing Office 365, or the other would be migrating to a new Exchange 365 tenant, which is, my mic is here. So adding to our existing Office 365 would cost $20 to $50 per year for a new domain. However, with this option, staff and council would need to log in with the existing domain name of district.yarmouth.ns.ca. That wouldn't be logging, every time you log into your computer, it would just be when you log in for email, for example, through the website. But a lot of times, what happens is it saves your login information, so you wouldn't have to put that in every time you go on there. The cost with migrating to the new Exchange tenant would be about $4,165 plus $800 for migration tool. With this one, staff and council would log in with the new email address. And so on this issue, we are recommending, given the cost difference, that we go with option one, which is going with the existing Office 365 and adding to that.
Okay, so there's two requests for decisions. I would prefer that each of them be done separately, make it for me clear, because I do have some questions about the second one. Counselor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked to talk first because I'm probably the one that bugged people the most about it, but unfortunately, I think, I don't know that manyarmit rolls off the tongue any more than district.yarmouth.ns.ca. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. And I asked our IT guru before the meeting if he thought this was, you know, yea or nay, and I don't think it's, I don't think, for the extra work that's involved in it, personally, I don't really know if there's a need to do that extra work. I can live with the pain of typing in what we're typing in now, especially with going through budget processes and adding any extra cost, doesn't seem relevant to me. So I won't be making the recommendation to move forward with either a, but I do appreciate you guys looking into it.
Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too appreciate the effort, because I find that it is long. However, I'm not sure where I stand at this, right now, I'm not sure where I stand. Do we know, could we buy modi.ca or modi.com? Was there any thought of whoever owns that, is it up for sale? Can it be bought? Is this something?
Anything, anything.
And I have no idea what that would even cost, but you know, I mean, we know that it happens, you know, that's, you know, that's business. And I don't know, it might be way more than we can afford, but is it, do I have to make a recommendation that, how that works?
It'd have to be a motion to direct staff to go explore that avenue.
I'll let you know, I did look it up to see who the owner was.
Yes.
And it wasn't available. It said Two Cows, a big company, basically, that owns a lot of them. But what you can do is hire a broker, and they do all the platform for you, and they take a cut, and it can be, you know, whatever, it can be anywhere between $5,000 and $50,000, who knows, whatever it is they want to sell it for, if they want to sell it. to sell it.
Okay, thank you. I don't know how I feel right now.
Before I turn the floor over to Deputy Warden, I was going to speak next. I didn't see his microphone, but I'm, my biggest problem with the way that our, that you get to our site now, say, for example, if you're on the phone talking to a resident, yeah, all you have to do is go look at yarmouth.district.ns.ca. And I would prefer that, personally, that we use the smallest thing that we could get available, like manyar.ca. For me, that would be a lot easier. You only have to spell out six, six letters, M-U-N-Y-A-R dot C-A, rather than spelling out D-I-S-T-R-I-C-T, and like, there's no capitals, no anything like that. It's very cumbersome, the way that our current website address is. That's my own personal opinion. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know this work was really going on. You know, it hasn't been a big issue, but I can see that the length of the, of, you know, there are a lot of characters there, so I can see it presenting, potentially presenting a problem. Having said that, staff has done a lot of work that somebody's asked them to do. And the cost is very, very minimal if you, if you go one way versus the other, and there's the recommendation that the lower-cost option behead. And any event, I think staff's thought about it a lot, so we're expecting that. I'll, I'll move, I'll move two motions, but I'll move one first, and then we can vote on that, and then obviously, the next one. So I'll move that the municipal, that the committee of the whole recommend to regular council that the municipal district yarmouth domains, domain name change to at manyarmit.ca.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second or second by councillor Lauren Cushing? Discussion on that motion. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with councillor Cunningham on the fact that, I agree with, I guess you. I find district is, district.yarmouth is long, but I also agree with councillor Hilton, that none of these really roll off the tongue. Like, they're not a, they're not an attractive, to me, anyway. Everybody has their own opinion. I just, I don't find they're an attractive, I don't know how many we looked at. I'm sure staff looked at numerous ones. But I do agree that it's not, not something that rolls off the tongue, but I would, I would really appreciate having something easier than district at yarmouth, at ns.yarmouth or yarmouth.ns.ca. So, I mean, I will be supporting this, because these are the options we have. But it would have been nice to find something a little smoother.
Councillor Hilton?
So in option one, which is what you, the motion on the table is, you said that you still log in using the at district.yarmouth.ns.ca. So really, it's an extra step. It might be easier for the public, maybe, to check the website. Is the website changed as well or just the domain, just-
That is the website.
That is in our email prefixes, but really, in the end, it seems like additional steps, and it doesn't get us to where we want to be. So, and through my conversation, maybe with yourself, I'm not supporting the motion.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could we raise your hands for the nays? Okay, a vote of four to two. Motion is carried to regular council. All right, the second part. Deputy Warden?
Right, I'll move that the committee of the whole forward to regular council. The recommendation that manyarmit.ca be added to the existing Office 365 service.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or second by councillor Lauren Cushing? Any discussion on that? Councillor Herbert?
I have a question. I guess I don't understand, or help me understand, the difference between, what is Exchange 365 tenant? Can you go through what that does again?
That would be our mail server. It's in the cloud, so it's, it's basically, that's where all your email comes from. That's where we do all our email. Our email is like done on a device, goes to the cloud, that's where all your email is collected, and that's where we manage all the email stuff.
Right. On tenant?
That's the tenant.
So if we stay with our existing, how, what are we doing there?
We're just adding the name manyarmit to it.
We're not sending anything to the cloud?
That's in the cloud. All this is, this is all in the cloud. All this service is in the cloud.
So how does tenant, what benefit is Exchange 365 tenant to us?
That's just what it's called. It's called the tenant. That's where I manage all this stuff.
Okay. I still, I still don't completely understand.
If I can-
I don't understand.
So I understand your question, councillor Herbert. So for $4,165-
Yes.
We would eliminate one time signing in with old domain names. So councillor Hilton raised a point that the first time you sign in on certain devices, you would have to use the old extensions, and then the device would remember you, and you would give these new domain names out. People would email you at manyarmit.ca. So for $4,165, you can eliminate that one-time extra step, or we can save the money, and for the first time you sign in on devices, you use your old extension. It's a backdoor, it's a back office piece. It's not visible, it's not front-facing.
But our email will change to at manyarmit.ca.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're currently on a tenant product, and to stay on the tenant product, we have to have that extra one time.
Okay.
But if we want to get rid of that back office step, it's going to cost you money.
Thanks. Technology is not my friend.
Me either. We've had many conversations for you to get that far.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote of five to one. Motion is carried. I'm sorry, would you like your name recorded, councillor Hilton? Yeah. Okay, item 9.4, request for decision. The Lake Vaughan Volunteer Fire Department looking to purchase a new piece of equipment. Madam CAO?
Thank you. So Greg might be tied up, so we'll get started, and maybe he'll pop in, maybe he won't. So we have a policy framework that provides a mechanism for municipal council within their authority under the Municipal Government Act to lend money to volunteer fire departments to assist with the capital projects. So Lake Vaughan has previously been a client in this program and has, has paid off their loan with the municipality. So there's an application provided for you for them to purchase, they want to purchase a truck. And so Lake Vaughan is a bit unique in terms of the volunteer fire service, because they serve communities and residents in the jurisdiction of both the District of Yarmouth and the District of Argyle. So you'll note in your package that the request for decision is to receive authorization to lend up to the maximum $250,000, and that's because we anticipate the municipality of Argyle may also provide some capital for the project. So the request for decision before you today is to approve a loan of up to $250,000 to the Lake Vaughan Fire Department. Per the terms in the policy, Volunteer Emergency Service Providers Capital Loan Policy V-018-19. And their application package is complete. It does include all the required information.
Deputy Warden?
Right, I'll move that the committee of the whole recommend to regular, to the regularly scheduled council meeting, that Modi lend up to $250,000 to the Lake Vaughan Volunteer Fire Department, per the terms and conditions of the Volunteer Emergency Services Providers Capital Loan Policy V-108-19, for the reasons outlined in the document presented to our committee of the whole.
Okay, motion on the floor, seconded by councillor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that? I will say this much, since I see no microphones flashing yet, the price of equipment is certainly gone up. And it's gone up exponentially over the last time when they borrowed for, this time, they're looking for a little bit smaller truck than what, what they borrowed for before. And if I remember correctly, those, those two trucks are roughly the same price. The last one would be like a, what we call like a five-ton. This is only a ton and a half. And the prices of the vehicles and the equipment has certainly gone up over the years, but I do commend Lake Vaughan Fire Department for taking on the initiative, because I do know that the last loan that they had, they paid it off, paid it off before, if I remember correctly.
I don't have that in mind yet.
I think they did. So anyway, councillor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO, we're approving the loan, but we, they go out and do their own research on what they want, find what they want, and, because I know with NSFM, I think two years ago now, we had the presentation from Canoe Procurement, and I've tried to hook them up with a couple fire departments that were looking for trucks. I haven't had the best response from, from them, but I really want to know. They say they buy in bulk, they buy for all of the municipalities across Canada, and they can do better. I really want to know if they can or if they can't. So I'm just wondering if we could connect them, just for, just for the, I just want to know if it's, what they say it's going to be. We all listen to municipalities. They said they can do better than anyone. You know, I'm looking at the website now and the number of manufacturers that they work with. I suppose I could reach out and do that.
What we can do, if it's okay with council, we can approach that in a manner that, when the letter goes out to let them know that the loan has been approved, we can certainly make them aware of Canoe. And Greg has a great relationship with, with the volunteer fire service. If there's feedback on Canoe, he can maybe collect that anecdotally, and we can share it back to councillor Jerky, who represents this region on the NSFM board.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. In addition here, item 9.5, Park Drive, G-Class. Deputy Warden, you asked to have that added to the agenda? You have the floor.
Yeah, I did. As you're well aware, we've talked about Park Drive quite a bit, but this, this is the paved section that's, I don't know if it's J-Class. We refer to those whole series of lettered roads sort of similarly, but it's J-Class or one of the other classes that we share some costs on with the, with the province. So having said that, a number of residents have called, and I've confirmed by driving over it a number of times, it is in bad condition, the paved section. Like, it's potholed down to the, down to the gravel essentially, in a number of spots, so, and it's heavily trafficked. It wasn't, you know, it's gotten worse lately, maybe, maybe with the frost and maybe with a lot of traffic going over, because obviously, there's a lot more people living down there. So what I'd like to talk about here is, is us reaching out to the province and, or Public Works in Transportation and asking the question, can we patch it temporarily until we can get to the point where we can agree to cost share the resurfacing of it, potentially? So I guess this is about, about what's the fix in the near term for, for the potholes. So I guess what I'll do is, is perhaps I'll ask through the chair, perhaps I'll ask her CAO for, for her opinion on a move, potential move forward.
Sure. So I think, you know, the way Public Works in Transportation approaches these kinds of projects is they have a capital stream, which is managed out of Halifax, and then they have their annual repairs and maintenance. So the first thing I think I can do is ask the question about, you know, which arm of the operation would that level of repair fit under, and then get connected with the right person to see if there are plans underway to address that in the near term and put some temporary measures in place.
Mike, so if it's okay with everybody, that seems like a reasonable way forward, and perhaps her CAO can just get back to council for, with an update at some point once she determines, you know, what the, what the, what the move forward might be, obviously, after she makes contact with the, with the Public Works in Transportation. Thank you.
There's one more thing I'd like to add to that. Something that's happened when it comes to, doesn't matter whether it's a gravel road, a driveway culvert issue, potholes, chloriding. One resource that, that I've been pushing, and actually, it was just, I can't remember, it was last night or the night before, that I posted on there about provincial road issues that, that we seem to get a lot of. And one, one of the best things we can do is, and also when we had the meeting with Public Works here in the municipal office, which I don't believe you were to, Deputy Warden, we had asked them about their website, tir-ooc@novascotia.ca. That, there is a fantastic resource that we have, because for the simple fact, we either send that email, I don't have the phone number for it right off the top of my head, but when we call them and/or email them, they send us a ticket number. And it's something that the residents can give to us, that we can follow up with the Department of Public Works. That's been, it works fairly well. If I remember correctly, when we had that meeting with the, with the group that we had here, that they have, this is like a call center it goes to, and I know a lot of people don't like to hear the word "call center," but they had over 70,000 calls across Nova Scotia. And that's one way that we can, we can well work with the public when it comes to public, public road issues, whether it's J-Class roads, whether it's highways, whether, like I said before, culverts, ditching, dust, anything. So that's one thing that I've been certainly been pushing here lately, to try to get more people to do. Actually, another thing there's, that happened recently, and I do believe it's getting fixed, and it was reported through that same website, was a rotten tree along the roadside up in, near the Carlton area. So that's how that was reported, and that, that's, from my understanding, is supposed to be fixed. Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo your comments. When I have residents reach out to me, I wish I could fix roads and ditches and potholes and all of those things, but I know I can't. I send them to the email and the phone number, and the phone number is 1-844-696-7737, because I keep it screenshotted, because it's something I just text off, email off, or tell, you know, tell them over the phone. And I tell the resident that I can advocate on their behalf, but they really are the ones who need to be stepping up and contacting Public Works Nova Scotia to advocate for themselves and their residents. I can help, I can help after the fact, but for me, if I, if I spent as much time as I thought I should on sending emails to Public Works on potholes and roads, I wouldn't have time to do this job or my paid job, my other paid job. So I just, I really strongly encourage the residents to use that phone number or the email, and, you know, and then if they get no action within a period of time, they can call me and I can, you know, help them after that. But I just, I'm like you, I, I send them there first.
Yeah. I'd like to help more, but like you said, it, it becomes quite a bit. All right. Item? There's no motion. Yeah, actually, I think it'd be preferable that we, if there's, if council wishes to give any-
So there's not another council meeting until June 1st, so I can ask this question by consensus and just let council know where they're at, if everybody's comfortable.
Yeah, that's fine. You can do that if you wish.
Sorry, council. What I had said to the chair was, if you're comfortable with doing this by consensus, I'll just ask the question and get back to you. Your next council meeting's not till June 1st, so I feel like probably the question might, there might be some pressure to just get a sense of the answer. Yeah. But I will say, I've used, I've used the centralized system, and I will say this, not to take a position on the conversation, but to say, what happens is, there's data created, and the data does inform where money gets invested. So even if council does advocate on behalf of its residents for a particular issue, it is still important to backfill with, with people filing those concerns and complaints through the call center, because it is used by the department for long-term planning.
Yes, that's right. That was mentioned in that meeting as well. Okay, Madam CAO, you have the direction you need, consensus?
you have the direction you need? Consensus? All right, item number 10, no in-camera agenda items. Item 11, there's no in-camera recommendations for not going into camera. Item number 12, looking for a motion to adjourn, moved by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone.